So.
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, March 29, 2022. A note that Commissioner Farr is excused today, and we are starting at the agenda with adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to today's agenda?
Staff, don't have any adjustments, Chair, and I would just note that, just as a reminder for everyone, that typically we are looking at meeting in person in Harris Hall, and we, the Board would certainly have the ability to consider that option if Harris Hall was available to us, but we are currently under construction there to make some much-needed HVAC and additional improvements to that, that room. We anticipate that by the third week in May, those improvements will be complete and will have the ability to, to consider going, having meetings in person and hybrid, which is what we would consider in the future. So just wanted to share that, that we currently don't have a physical location where the Board can be filmed and conduct all the business that you need to do, and as soon as we do have that location available, then we will make it, we'll make in-person meetings an option. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that update. Next item on the agenda is county administration, and we have a public hearing and Order and Resolution 22-03-29-01 in the matter of adopting fiscal year 2122 supplemental budget number four, making, reducing, and transferring appropriations. And so first we'll hear from staff, and then we will open the public hearing. So we have today Christine Moody from staff on this item.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. So as noted, this is the fourth supplemental budget for this fiscal year. We time this one to really review our revenues and expenditures and anything now known to us before we publish the proposed budget document, so that when you're looking year to year, those figures will be more in line with each other with what's known at the time. So while there's quite a few adjustments within the supplemental, a few that I will highlight for you, we do have total change of 7.7 million in additional revenue coming into the county. Most of that's going to be in the form of grants and other revenues that have occurred since the last supplemental that you saw in January. It includes the reduction in our Fund 285, which is our internal government, Human Services Fund within Health and Human Services. The reduction is occurring because of just the funds as they cross fiscal years. A lot of the one-time funding for rent relief and other federal programs related to COVID are coming through. That fund is passed through, so we're adjusting as we get to know the fund balance and how much we really anticipate for this year. So we also have a formation of the new department that the Board has been informed of, which now has the name of Community Justice and Rehabilitation Services. That's parole and probation and youth services forming into one department. The creation of three FTE in that new department in order to get it set up to begin on July 1st, when they actually merge into one. And we do have a couple FTE being added within county administration specific to affordable housing and climate. So those are being formed under a new policy division within county administration. And that's the summary unless there are specific questions about any of the other items in the supplemental.
Great. Thank you so much. So I will open the public hearing, and first I will explain this public hearing is on supplemental budget for the current fiscal budget year as allowed under ORS 294.471 and ORS 294.473. The public hearing is required under ORS 294.473 due to one or more funds amending expenditures by more than 10% from current budgeted amounts. Notice of this hearing and summary of the changes was published as detailed in the supplemental budget order and resolution included in this agenda item. Participants may testify for or against any item contained in the supplemental budget. And so I will now open the public hearing and ask Diana to see if there's anyone who wishes to testify on this item only.
Thank you, Vice Chair Krieger. At this time, if you have signed up to speak at the public hearing regarding the supplemental budget, please raise your virtual hand, and I will call upon you to pour your testimony for this item. Vice Chair Krieger, I do not see any hands raised, so I'll return to you.
Thank you. Then at this time, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's any additional comments from staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There are no additional comments.
All right. Any discussion from the Board on this item before I ask for a motion? Seeing none? Do I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Buck?
I'll move approval of the public hearing and Order and Resolution 22-03-9-01 as presented.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Buck and seconded by Commissioner Bernie. Any discussion to the item, to the motion? And I'll call Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I just want to quickly state that I'm going to vote no on this supplemental, and it's about the addition of FTE for the climate program. I've consistently thought that that's not a matter of county concern, not a place we can make a difference, and we should be placing our limited resources in more important functions that are matters of county concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three in favor, one opposed, and one excused. We are now on item three, emergency business. Mr. Mokaiusk, do you have any emergency business today?
We don't have any emergency business today. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we will move into public comments, and I'll leave it to Diana Jones to cover this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Krieger. At this time, if you have registered for or signed up for public comment, please raise your virtual hand, and I will call upon you in the order the hands are being raised to present public comment. You will each be given three minutes for your public comment, and I will mute you at the three-minute mark. I will get the timer up, and we will begin our public comment in one moment. At this time, I will call on Dylan Plummer and followed by Anne Neeland. Dylan, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public comment.
Hello, can you hear me? Great. Hello, County Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today. My name is Dylan Plummer, and I'm the senior campaign representative for the Sierra Club, covering Oregon and Washington, working specifically on building electrification. I'm here to draw your attention to the public letter that was submitted with 17 community organizations signed on in support of the current draft Climate Action Plan with modest revisions. And after conversations with Mark Nystrom in the past few days, we feel comfortable that many of our requests have been met to some degree or another with actions moved into different sections and with slight modifications to wording. That said, there is still one very high priority revision that we're requesting regarding the re-edition of the previously included action NGS1, which would make explicit the county's support for municipalities and jurisdiction to electrify. We think it's critical that Lane County is signaling to cities within the county that, you know, electrification is clearly the fastest and most economic way to reduce emissions, and we believe it is of utmost importance that that action is included. The Sierra Club looks forward to supporting a Climate Action Plan that emphasizes the need for comprehensive electrification in order to reduce emissions and protect public health, commits the county to build all new publicly-funded buildings solely with electric appliances and electric heat, and highlights the county's support for cities like Eugene taking action at the municipal level to ensure that construction is 100% electric moving forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next speaker is Anne Neeland, followed by Nicholas Anselmo. Anne, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public comment. Anne, I do show you're self-muted.
There we go. Good morning. I'm Anne Neeland, and I want again to draw this Board's attention to the quiet and curiously timed rollout of the Oregon Vaccine Passport Program. What is the agenda here? Well, I can tell you, it stinks, because the mainstream media is pushing a campaign saying, quote, "According to the Oregon Health Authority, the tool was primarily designed to increase equity," unquote. So let me get this straight. Step one, heavily promote and require individuals to take an experimental and ineffective gene therapy injection. Step two, co-op businesses to require patrons to prove, quote, "vaccination status" to use the businesses. Step three, develop and promote a digital tool to make it easy for businesses to force individuals to disclose private medical information to access services, and then to discriminate between those who took the injections and those who did not in the name of equity. Let me say that last part again, discriminate in the name of equity. Do we need vaccine passports to achieve equity? And who decided equity was an important goal anyway? This whole thing is mostly laughable, but it is so alarming. Because these digital passports are not about health at all, they are about getting your personal information as part of a digital government-issued identity to allow for maximum control and surveillance. This is a foundation of a social credit system that monitors individuals' compliance with government mandates. The vaccination context is just a training ground. Coming up next is monitoring and controlling individual carbon emissions. How much fossil fuel are you buying and using? Have you put more than your fair share of carbon into the atmosphere today? I bet society's newfound preoccupation with equity will help the government decide whose consumption needs to be externally managed. Have you heard about the new MasterCard Pilot Program to track individual card holders' carbon footprint data? Do you think this is a helpful idea because of your commitment to environmental and sustainability issues? You think this MasterCard is a handy, cutting-edge tracking tool, sort of like Oregon's voluntary vaccine passport? Are you thinking how handy this will be to readily show your compliance? And if you're thinking that, try thinking about this quote from Aldous Huxley instead, the author of The Brave New World, warned, quote, "There will be in the next generation or so a pharmacological method of making people their love, their servitude, and producing dictatorship without tears," so to speak, "producing a kind of painless concentration camp for entire societies so that people will in fact have their liberties taken away from them, but will rather enjoy it." So I stay holdfast to your liberty and freedoms and say no to vaccine passports. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next speaker is Nicholas Anselmo, followed by Harry Sanger. Nicholas, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public comment.
Good morning. So we're still behind screens. I heard when the meeting started, it seemed like you guys started before, before you put everything on the screen, because Krieger was in the middle of saying something. And I noticed that we're expected to have May have some type of hybrid meeting in the third week of May. And I find it interesting that the city council can't seem to home a in-person meeting, but they are supposedly expected to solve a homelessness problem. It's laughable to think that the excuse that we don't have a building for a commissioner meeting is accepted. This is just shows a complete derelict and derelict of duty of our government to provide the basic, simple services that you were voted in to provide. It doesn't make you look good or any better by using that as an excuse other than it's an emergency pandemic and you're still hiding behind your screens. I appreciate Joe Bernie's comment a few weeks back about ending the discrimination of people whether they wear masks or not. And I find it kind of, I like what he's had to say, but I find it somewhat shallower or hollow, because that's all that this is, is discrimination. Even though the mandates are up, this discrimination doesn't end, and it's going to go on for a long time, because something like two years of this doesn't just go away because the mandates go away. These types of divides will take a long, long time to heal. And I got fired from my job because I refused to wear a suffocation device for seven hours a day. They actually hired me on, allowing me to wear a see-through mask so I could serve unmasked people, and then they changed their mind, and I refused. So now I get to go and find a new job, trying to avoid being discriminated against for not being vaccinated, so I can serve people who are unmasked and most likely either vaccinated or unvaccinated. So to call on people to stop discriminating when you say nothing and do nothing about discrimination of people who've been vaxxed or not vaxxed, when we all know that they're not safe and effective and they don't stop the spread, obviously. If you look at other countries and other places that have higher vaccination rates or having massive outbreaks and hospitalizations, this needs to end, and you need to stand up and say more about ending discrimination in regards to just people being able to have an income and find a job and not being a-
Thank you for your public comment. Our next speaker will be Harry Sanger. Mr. Sanger, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public comment.
All right. Thank you, County Commissioners, for having us here today. I've got to say, it's shameful that you're not in person. There's been no effort. We had two years where we were shut down and working remotely. We couldn't have done the Harris Hall modifications at that point. This is absurd. There's high school gymnasiums. We could have these discussions in person. I'm really trying not to point fingers, though. I'm sitting here, and I'm enjoying the freedom that we now have. Thank you, Vladimir Putin, for ending coronavirus. That was amazing. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous, this ideological battle that we're in right now. I mean, we had Dylan Plummer pushing for electrification, i.e. more government interference. We've got Anne Neeland pushing to not discriminate in the name of equity, i.e. less government interference. And that's what this whole thing has been about for two years now, is government interference in our lives. And if you can't hold an in-person meeting, why are you interfering with our society without regard for the repercussions? We can't electrify everything. We can't get rid of natural gas that would destroy our local economy, would destroy manufacturing in Lane County, and these environmentalists. I love, I love green. I love nature. I want to preserve our clean water. I want to preserve our clean air, but I also don't want to outsource our pollution to foreign countries and then be dependent on bringing in resources from outside of Lane County. And as Commissioner Bozovic correctly identified, this isn't a county issue. A county issue is how do we run our county, not what energy sources people use within our county. That's just, it's too much. We need to step back. I mean, we saw what happened with coronavirus. We see this new public health crisis with suicide in Lane County, and myself and others came here and told you, if you continue to shut down society and tell people what they can and can't do, it's going to create a mental health crisis. And here we are. That was so predictable, and I don't want to point fingers. But can we please keep that in mind as we move forward, that your decisions have a ripple effect on the rest of society? And when we destroy small businesses and we take people's livelihoods, when we separate children from their friends and their peers, it has an adverse effect on society. So I'm sorry, I usually write these down in advance and have facts and statistics, and you guys didn't really seem to care for that. So this is my emotional plea. You know, when public health is blindly following the CDC and not asking the questions that the people are asking that then turn out to be right, that the CDC was overcounting deaths, that 25% of the deaths in children have been rolled back by the CDC's official statistics now. When the Commissioners blindly follow those public health officials and don't ask the questions that the people are asking, you're doing a disservice to your constituents. So please find the middle ground. Please stop this wildly swinging pendulum, and let's move forward together.
Thank you for your public comment. Our last speaker is Tressa Beaver. Tressa, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public testimony.
Can you hear me? Great. So first of all, I want to thank Harry for his public comment today. It is in alignment with similar comments that I have to make in regards to how ridiculous it is that we are not meeting in person. After two years of, of being locked down, businesses being directly impacted, people's lives on, on a global level have been harmed so radically by these draconian Nazi-like shutdowns and lockdowns and discriminatory behaviors of mask-wearing and not being able to enter a building without a mask on our face, without a muzzle, being made to be on these Zoom calls where none of you have any connection to who we are and, and, and what is going on in our personal lives. And, and in all honesty, I don't really feel like you really care at all. I don't really feel like you, you give a rat's ass about what is really going on in, in the public. You want to listen to the CDC, who is lying. You want to listen to the media, who's lying, and, and it's obvious that all of the mainstream media is basically a monopoly at this point. There is so much that has happened over the last two years. My personal business has, has been literally destroyed. Does anybody even know how many people are still on unemployment, getting, getting unemployment benefits and, and reaping the benefits of, of government handouts that we, the people, cannot afford to be doing? It's impacting businesses on an unprecedented level. Where are the people to do the work that's needed in businesses? Why is it that so much of this coronavirus narrative is, is not being investigated further when people are dying more of the vaccines and then they are of the coronavirus itself? Get your-
Thank you for your public comment. At this time, I have no one else signed up for public comment, so I'll return the meeting to you, Vice Chair Krieger.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda, Commissioners' response to public comments or any other issues or remonstrance. Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. I want to respond to two items. I do appreciate people taking their time to comment this morning. One person had mentioned that it will take quite a long time to come out of the repercussions of this pandemic over the last few years. I appreciate that statement because I agree wholeheartedly. This is not something that you quickly turn around from, and we are feeling that on a variety of different levels. The, the other point I wanted to make is that I do object to the glorification of a dictator who is actually invading Ukraine and slaughtering people and threatening democracy as we know it. I would be very careful about doing that, because this is much bigger than us here at the county, when we reference people who are basically murdering people and trying to take over their country on the other side of the world. That does literally affect us here at home, and every single person in the United States at this point, as well as Europe and surrounding countries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to bring forward at this time? Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to say that I think the reference to Vladimir Putin was meant to be sarcasm and not glorification, and I think most people listening would have understood that. I don't think anyone wants to glorify Vladimir Putin, and the horrible things he's done, is doing right now, the horrible things he's done in the past, the assassinations he's carried out of opponent, political opponents, the control of the press that he exerts on his country. No one wants to glorify him. But I think that using his name and the fact that it seemed like mask mandates ended about the same time he started threatening Ukraine was a sarcastic reference, not a glorification. On a more serious note, I will be asking, under Commissioners' business, if we can look at other facilities to hold our in-person meetings in the interim. Waiting two more months to have in-person meetings because of building repairs seems something we could work around. We have other facilities. We have large meeting rooms in Public Works, the Goodman Room. We have a large conference rooms that are utilized for training in H&amp;HS.
We have large conference rooms that are utilized for training in H&amp;HS. It seems we could find someplace that's set up for teleconferencing, where we could set up a hybrid meeting and hold a public meeting with an in-person audience at this time. So I'll be asking for that under Commissioner's Business. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The titles are swimming around today. First, I'll be asking in Commissioner Business, in Commissioner Business, I won't be doing it in responses. But I will agree that if an alternative setting can be found, that would be good. You know, I think we should not confuse the fact that supply schedules have delayed all construction. This is something that was on the books to be done and to be completed by now. The county is subject to the same kind of delays as every other construction project at this time. No plot, no intent. And thank you, Mr. Bozovich, for agreeing with me with your head there. I would also like a couple more things. I think that there are elements of truth, whether misapplied or not, that I want to state that I actually am concerned with. I am concerned with various kinds of controls, AI surveillance on behavior that seems to be moving forward. Hopefully not like it is in China, you know, is the most extreme example I'm aware of. But that is a concern of mine, just like it's a concern of mine that control in many ways, there is a dynamic where it's taken out of the hands of individuals and into the hands of, well, in terms of media, large corporate structures that are not based in our own communities and are not providing us with local news. I mean, the Register Guard is about to not even have an opinion section. It's certainly not locally owned. And we're really suffering in that regard. So I do resonate with some of those comments. I also want to suggest that this is our opportunity. We are reopened. We're not reopening. We are reopened. There are no mask mandates, I pray, I hope, that I'm aware of. There are no mask mandates in effect. And it becomes a matter of personal responsibility, and I don't think that's deep. I think that's profound. And it becomes, when it becomes a matter of personal responsibility, many people have different issues or comorbidities or for one reason or another are in vulnerable groups. And if those people, for whatever their reasons, choose to wear a mask, my point before and my point again is we need to be considerate and respectful of individual decisions. And for those that don't choose to, we need to be equally respectful. And for, I can, you know, and we can, and people that don't want to be exposed in certain arenas don't have to go to where a majority of people are not wearing masks. And I'd like to remind us again that every private business has the right to decide what its policies will be. And we are now seeing some that are requesting masks still be worn. I went to a doctor's visit yesterday and in medical facilities, masks are still required. I have no issue with that whatsoever. And then other businesses are choosing other standards. Finally, what I would like to share with the board and with the public is I had the opportunity, the honor, yesterday morning, of being at the swearing-in of the new Springfield Police Chief. I want to say that there were several county staff there. Chief Harold was there, District Attorney Purlo was there, and obviously many Springfield City Council members. And for our community, this represents a real culture shift. The Springfield Police Department, I think, is in very good hands, represents a two-year process of transition of leadership. And if you have a chance, I encourage you to listen to Springfield Police Chief Shears' swearing-in presentation. It really was remarkable and profound. I can't do it justice, but one of the quotes had something to do with "Safety without compassion is not safety. Safety and justice without equal, everyone being equal and respected under the law is not safety." And he had a great quote, and I really encourage you to listen to it. So those are my remonstrances. Thank you very much, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernie. I will just briefly add, I appreciate Commissioner Buck's comments, whether it's glorification or the subject of a joke. Some things are simply not a laughing matter and are not to be taken up in such a way. So I appreciate Commissioner Buck's comments there. And speaking of that, I also just want to point out that two of the folks speaking this morning made reference to the Holocaust and concentration camps. And in my opinion, those are generally really off the mark. They're inaccurate historically and factually. And frankly, are really quite offensive to use those references in the framework of a public health response to a pandemic and fundamentally sound scientifically-backed measures to keep people safe and protected. I think with that, we will close item five, Commissioner's Response and Remonstrance. And before moving to the consent calendar, I believe county administrator had some notes for us in response to meeting location. I understand there's quite a few more moving parts and pieces than may be evident. So I think, Mr. Mokrheyski, if you wanted to respond to that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. And Chair, I mean, you know, if the board under your Commissioner's Business would like to discuss more, we certainly can. And have staff look into what options would be for in-person meetings outside of Harris Hall. An important factor to note is that the two physical locations that are set up with webcasting capabilities are Harris Hall and the board's conference room. The board conference room is also in the Public Services Building, just one floor up from Harris Hall. It's much smaller. And as the board knows, it has a conference table with chairs around it. And so it's a much smaller footprint that typically does not accommodate the number of folks that we have for our board meetings. So those are the two rooms that are able, really the only two rooms we can webcast from. We could have meetings in other locations and record them and then post that online. But there's a significant both logistical and cost element to set up new rooms for webcasting capability. So that's just an important factor. Prior to COVID, interestingly, when we were having all of our meetings in person, we were having more and more public comment and members of the public who were coming and saying, "Give us some other options." You know, we can't always, you know, it's difficult to come and park in downtown Eugene and at nine o'clock on a Tuesday and all these things. And people were asking for opportunities, both folks in rural parts of the county that found it difficult to come to the metro area, again, to find parking and to navigate. All of that, we're asking for other opportunities. So I think the feeling on behalf of the county is that actually access to our public meetings has been much greater as a result of the virtual meetings. And what will be beneficial is once we can get back to an in-person, we'll be hybrid. So people will still have the ability to call in or come in in person. So I just wanted those factors to be considered as the board thinks about what options may or may not be available prior to when Harris Hall is physically available to. It's the easiest thing to do would be the board conference room, but it's a very small footprint that would not accommodate a lot of people to attend in person from the public or staff. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. And I will add, several committees and other public meetings are happening slowly, getting back to in-person meeting where there isn't that constraint around using metro television and having that equipment and infrastructure in place. Believe me, I'm really anxious to get into Harris Hall. I say into, not back to. I have yet to participate in a Board of County Commissioner meeting in Harris Hall. I've been in office for a year and a quarter now and haven't been able to. So believe me when I say I am very anxious to get back, but I want to make sure that it makes good sense for the organization to do so. So thank you. Moving on to item six, Consent Calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar for March 29, 22?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Buck moves. Commissioner Bernie seconds approval of the consent calendar. Any discussion to that motion? Take the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for in favor and one excused. Moving on to item seven, Public Works, Order 22-03-29-11, in the matter of approving one Public Works Amendment and delegating authority, et cetera. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Mokrheyski to introduce staff on this item. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you. I am going to declare a conflict of interest on this particular item. I am related to the Executive Director of St. Vincent de Paul. And I will turn my screen off for this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Dan Hurley, our Public Works Director, is here to lead this item. Dan?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a routine contract. We've been in contract with St. Vincent for probably 15-plus years for handling our mattresses that come in to our transfer stations for recycling. This extends the contract out through the end of the calendar year and adds another $150,000 on the contract to get us through the end of the calendar year. As you may be aware, the state passed extended producer responsibility legislation that will provide a system statewide for recycling mattresses. But we needed a contract to get us through the implementation of that. That will begin at the beginning of January 2023. That's all.
Thank you. Excuse me, just a minute, just having to reset my Another reason I want to get back into Harris Hall. Fewer buttons to push. With that, I would entertain a motion to pass Order 22-03-29-11. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Bernie?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie moves. Commissioner Bozovich is second. All those in favor of passing Order 22-03-29-11 in the matter of approving one Public Works Amendment and delegating authority to the county administrator to execute the approved amendment for St. Vincent de Paul Society of Lane County Incorporated, expense in the amount of $150,000, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three in favor, one abstaining, and one absent. And I will just make a note of appreciation to Lane County's own Senator James Manning for carrying that Senate bill. It was 1576 for the mattress recycling program. So thank you very much.
Great news. Thank you.
All right. Moving along to item eight, County Administration. We have three items. The first is Order 22-03-29-12 in the matter of amending Lane Manual, Chapter 65, to establish provisions for appointing positions to the Commission of the Housing Authority and Community Services Agency of Lane County, doing businesses Homes for Good. And I will turn it over to staff for this item.
Steve, would you like to start?
So I just was going to say that Greg Rikoff, our Director of Operations, and Jacob Fox, who of course is the Executive Director of Homes for Good, will lead this item. Steve Dingell, our County Council, has been actively involved in working with Homes for Good on this item and this transition process. Mr. Dingell's representing Lane County in court today, so he's not able to be here. So I think Mr. Rikoff can represent sort of the county's involvement in this work. And Greg, I don't know if you want to kick it off or if Jacob is going to take it.
We'll go ahead and start. Thank you, Steve. Chair Treeger, Commissioners, we have an order before you today amending Chapter 65 of the Lane Manual to address the changes of governance for the Homes for Good Housing Authority Board. As you recall, the board approved the change in governance structure in September 21, 2021. While the Housing Authority is a separate governmental entity, the Board of County Commissioners has statutory authority to make appointments to the Housing Authority Board. Today's order codifies the appointment process. Although Steve Dingell is not able to join us, he has done some significant work on this. The Executive Director is here to share the establishment of provisions and the appointment process. So without further ado, let me turn it over to Jacob Fox.
Great. Thanks, Greg. I really appreciate it. For, I guess for the public record, I'll just kind of thumbnail a bit of background on this agenda item and board order. So the Homes for Good Board is currently comprised of the five Lane County Commissioners and two appointed Commissioners, Shar Revis and Michelle Thurston. Shar's from Florence, Michelle's from Cottage Grove. And there's, the Homes for Good Board's been in conversation about the potential of a governance modification for a number of years. And last year, a recommendation was made from the Homes for Good Board to the Lane County Board for such modification to occur. One of the neat things that came out of the deliberation at the Homes for Good Board was increasing the size of the board from seven members to nine, which allows for, you know, greater participation from community leaders. And then the other kind of fundamental shift is decreasing the number of county commissioners on the board from five to two. So this board order before you today is just an administrative step. And the exciting work begins after this deliberation and hopeful approval of this board order. And that's that we get to open up the application and recruitment process for the Homes for Good Board. And yesterday, we briefed Steve Mokrheyski and Greg Rikoff and just kind of mapped out what that process looks like. We did get some input from them and are going to do a little bit more due diligence. But in the next week or two, we will open up that application and recruitment process. So with that, I'll just conclude the context that I provided. And I am here to answer any questions that the Board of County Commissioners may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Before I ask if there are comments from the board, I will just say I think this is a really exciting and important sort of systems change that's being made. And I think it's really reflective of an organization in Homes for Good that is, you know, responsive and adaptive and innovative. And this is just another example of that, of being willing to change such a fundamental thing as a governance model, but to do it in a way that actually I believe will increase accountability and transparency and good oversight for an organization that's really grown in really important ways to meet one of the most fundamental critical needs in the community, which is affordable housing. So thank you to Jacob Fox and to Greg Rikoff and Steve Dingell and everyone else on the staff of both organizations for all the work to get us to this point. And I am happy to open it up for a conversation or for a motion and then discussion to the motion, whichever is the board's pleasure. Commissioner Buck.
I'll start with the motion, so we can start discussion if there is any. I'll move Order 22-03-29-12 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second, but I am looking forward to the discussion.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Buck and seconded by Commissioner Bernie and discussion to the motion. Commissioner Bozovich.
It will come as no surprise to my fellow board members or Jacob that I am opposed to this change in governance. I was supportive of expanding the number of people to nine, but I have not supported the reduction of the role of elected officials in their oversight of an agency that spends millions of taxpayer dollars. I greatly dislike the governance structure of Lane Transit District as purely appointed with no elected oversight. There are some other boards and around here, I think, that are overbalanced with appointed members versus elected. The local elected officials are directly answerable to the public. I'm the guy that people run into at Fred Meyer and has to stand for reelection. An appointed person doesn't necessarily have that direct impact and that oversight. So I just will be voting no on this. I know I'm going to lose the vote, but I have not supported reducing the number of commissioners on this board. I did support the idea of adding some positions to add some additional citizen members. But I just feel it's really important that majority of the board should be elected officials. But I just feel it's really important that majority of the board should be elected officials.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you. I have mixed feelings on this. I absolutely respect the need to broaden the base of board members to have it be more diverse, representing really the interests of the community as it relates to the space. And I also understand the Board of Commissioners, Jacob, if I'm not mistaken. One of the issues is you need more work out of your board and sometimes commissioners are dragged a hundred different ways and can't all give that. Who will appoint the commission? I have some questions. Under this structure, who would appoint the commissioners?
The, I think Greg pointed it out in his comments. Lane County's defined as the Homes for Good governing body. So Lane County Board of Commissioners will always appoint the Homes for Good Board, the appointed members of the Homes for Good Board.
Right. Let me get this a different way. The, let's say four commissioners want to be on the Homes for Good Board. Or is the Homes for Good Board going to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as to which two? Or as with so many other boards that commissioners are on, will the Board of Commissioners itself decide which will be the two commissioners that represent the board?
Greg, would you mind? Taking on, you have more experience with the array of county committees and boards.
Well, but this is coming from the Homes for Good Board, is it not? I want to understand who's appointing the two commissions. I'm sorry Greg, I didn't mean to usurp you.
Commissioner Bernie. It will work the same as your other appointments. You will make the determination amongst yourselves in terms of the who will represent the Lane County Commissioners on the board.
But thank you. But thanks Greg. But the, I'm sorry Chair, I just want to go through sort of but the rest of the potential Homes for Good Commissioners will go through a process as identified in this background paper that where the Homes for, where Homes for Good will be making that recommendation. But the commissioners will have the ultimate authority, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to state that I support this. That was important to me because I know there have been a couple of commissioners, including myself, that have sometimes bucked this system a little bit with I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly truly. I've seen Homes for Good through Jacob's leadership. Step in and do some amazing things, including with the patrician. And I've also seen real foot dragging as it relates to the community benefits framework. So I want, I just want the board to know that I would support this with the amendment that it'd be three commissioners on the Homes for Good Board. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernie. Commissioner Buck?
Thank you Chair. I do support this. This order and change in the governance, I think it's been probably a long time coming, given it the growth of Homes for Good. And the just sheer expansion of services being provided throughout the region. I look forward to having expertise of other professionals on that particular board and drawing from their knowledge and support for the mission of Homes for Good. The LTD Board is slightly different in the choosing as those appointments, I believe, are from the governor. And in this particular board, the Board of Commissioners will continue to have the oversight of who's chosen as commissioners of the newly formed governance. I, I, I think it will be great to have a few more voices and it's not so large that people won't have enough time to speak their mind. I do hear Commissioner Bernie's interest in perhaps three Board of Commissioner Commissioners on that board. My only question on that is logistically, what does it mean in a difference of having three Board of Commissioners on that? Because then it's a, a different kind of public meetings requirements and legality. Even though the meetings are public anyway. So I think that would be a question for maybe Greg and Dingle. And, but I support it the way that it is, but I'm interested in hearing that response too.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. I see Greg has his hand raised and I assume it's, it's at least if not in total, in part. If not in total, then in part response to that question. That is my understanding as well. Three county commissioners would be a quorum of the Board of County Commissioners. And therefore it would fall under those public meeting rules and that's, and that's quite different. I will just say, I think it's important to remember, yes, this board, the Board of County Commissioners will still have the ultimate and final authority over approving the appointments of the Board of Homes for Good, which is a separate entity, but is under the authority of of the Lane County Board of Commissioners as the county's housing authority. So I think we, we have all the boxes checked with this structure, but that we couldn't have more than two commissioners serving on the Homes for Good Board. However, as we've discussed at Homes for Good Board meetings, that doesn't preclude either those same two and or other commissioners from serving on various committees. That will have the opportunity to form with this new model because we'll have a bigger pool of board members to choose from and those committees are also a way to engage and involve more community members at large who are not on the governing board. So I think there's plenty of opportunity for as many commissioners as want to be involved in the shaping and supporting and providing direction to this important organization. In addition to the two official designated commissioners that might serve on the board. Greg, did you want to add anything on this?
Vice Chair Triger Commissioners, I'm not equipped to speak to the ramifications of having three, other than knowing that that is, would be an official quorum of the Lane County Commission. I do note that Andy Clark is attentive to this meeting. And I'm assuming that he's here as Steve Dingles' representative. I don't know if Andy would have anything to add. But I do think it would be a challenge to have these meetings automatically become a quorum of, of the Lane County Commission. Andy, if you have anything to add to that, please jump in.
Well, maybe just real quick and Andy can step in after I complete my short sort of reaction or comments. I guess, you know, for me, like, you know, just hearing Jay and Joe comments, it really speaks to the commitment that the entire board has for affordable housing. And, you know, just the passion for creating more housing opportunities. And I'll just give one example from Commissioner Bozovich's district or ward. We are in the process of doing due diligence to purchase six point seven acres in Florence. And Jay's just been really, you know, sort of supportive of us doing anything and everything we can to expand housing opportunities everywhere, but especially in areas like Florence. So Jay, just want to appreciate you for that. I guess for me, the the point that Lori made is important, like the partnership between the two organizations is deep and it's proactive and it's alive. There can be things done like joint work sessions between the County Commission and the Homes for Good Board to really, you know, shape shared visions and, you know, sort of strategic approaches. So Joe, I mean, we did present today, you know, sort of a structure based on a lot of conversation. I don't have a perfect like reaction to sort of amending the Lane Manual as presented. I guess I would just ask for further discussion if necessary. My perspective is that this structure is the right structure for the board. There'll be two active BCC members on the Homes for Good Board always, and there can be a variety of ways for other, the three other BCC members to just stay proactively engaged with Homes for Good.
Thank you, Jacob. I think, you know, one of the other comments that I heard Commissioner Bozovich make about concern about oversight of an organization spending taxpayer dollars. And of course, you, you work every day in the world of housing and affordable housing and, and there are many other housing providers in our community that are pulling in state and federal dollars and spending those without any elected officials serving on their boards. And so I don't know if it would be useful or of interest to my colleagues to ask maybe for, I don't want to put you on the spot now, but any kind of follow up about just sort of some of the, like the top five affordable housing developers in our community and what they're spending in taxpayer dollars. I, I appreciate that concern. I understand where it comes from, but I, for me, it is certainly not a, a deal breaker. I think even with this new governance model, Homes for Good will have far more oversight of elected officials than any of the other housing providers in the community that are also spending taxpayer dollars. I see Commissioner Bernie has his hand up.
That's kind of you, Vice Chair, because I know I already used my thing. I just want to say that my, my perspective is that I agree with the intent behind this. And I agree with ninety-nine percent of the structure, but we're in an interesting period here. I want to give a couple of examples. The Lane Workforce Partnership used to be a part of Lane County. It is not now. And even though the county, I have the honor of serving as the County Commissioner attached to that. The county actually is fiscally responsible ultimately for the expenditure of those dollars. And as we're moving into this new world, workforce is becoming critically important. And in fact, those expenditures are divorced from oversight by Lane County. Now, what's another really critical thing now? How, of course, how, and in fact, I defer to Commissioner Buck and Commissioner Triger with your nonprofit experience and your tremendous experience in this space. But my perspective is, is that the notion of I have not heard a reason why there couldn't within the same structure be three commissioners. So you have a majority of commissioners, elected officials as part of this board. You know, we claim credit for much of the work of Homes for Good. But Homes for Good, I don't want it to be a separate entity. And that, we have two commissioners on MPC, we have two commissioners on a variety of other groups. I really feel like unless there is, you know, and I'm not going to get in the way. But I have yet to hear a compelling reason why there couldn't be three while maintaining this same diversified, expanded structure that gives Jacob and Homes for Good Board members that can devote time. And I'm still looking forward to hearing that. As it relates to public meeting law, hey, we have five commissioners on the Homes for Good Board now. That has not been an issue. So anyway, that's all. I'm not going to keep reiterating it. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see Commissioner Buck has her hand up. We also do have a ten AM time certain with guests from outside and I have one very quick question regarding some wording in this order. So Commissioner Buck, if, if we could just be quick and then we'll get to the the vote on the order and, and then we can come back to this at another time if we have more detailed questions at a Homes for Good Board meeting, perhaps.
Thank you, Chair. Just quickly, I'm, I'm wondering if we can, if we need to, to ensure that all commissioners here have all the information that they need. If this doesn't pass today, we, or we just postpone it for another week so that Council Dingle can be present to answer Commissioner Bernie's question. I'm supportive, but I'm trying to give an option here to get some additional feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. I will just note too, this was a conversation that we have all been part of at the Homes for Good Board meeting and there's been plenty of time to bring up these concerns about this new structure there. My one very specific question is in the conflict of interest section in E, letter D, about vendor. A conflict of interest of any vendor. And I know one of the reasons for wanting to have this shift in governance structure was to have more involvement from some of the industries and sectors that are more directly connected to the construction of affordable housing. So I don't know if you have any comment about that now, Jacob, as far as whether that's going to cause any problems or restrictions on seating a board and representatives that you really needed from that particular industry or sector. I don't know that it's something we need to discuss at length right now, but if you have any quick comment on that, that would help me just feel that much better about that being in here.
Yeah, I would say that this language came from our attorney and was reviewed and sort of approved by Lane County's Council. I do not think that this language will prevent us from getting sort of a wider array of diverse perspectives, experiences and, and businesses.
Thank you. Just, it's just a little different in, in most nonprofits. You're allowed to be on the board. If you have a conflict of interest, you just have to state it before taking any vote that would impact your financial interests. And this says they can't be appointed to the commission. So I wanted to make sure we weren't being too limiting in who you can ultimately consider, who that agency can ultimately consider. All right. Thank you. Well then, with that, and in the interest of time, I will entertain a motion on order twenty-two dash zero three dash two-nine dash one-two.
Chair, we have a motion on the table.
Oh, thank you. Right. I will then call the vote. Thank you so much. All those in favor of approving the order on the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
But, but Chair, again, I'm hoping this can be brought up again to the board as Commissioner Buck indicated, rather than just killing the order.
Well, then I will ask for input from staff as to what are, if that was the intention. But in fact, the vote went as it did, which my understanding is a tie vote is the equivalent of a no vote. What is our right best next step for getting this back in front of the board so that Homes for Good can move forward with its business?
Chair Triger, Commissioners, there's more work for us to do. So we will return, give thought to what we've heard today. Work with County Council and return to you with a proposal.
All right. Thank you. Will you need anything later in future assignments or is that just going to automatically roll into adding this on to another meeting in the near term?
I believe it, we don't need this as future assignments, but should you want to have three head nods at the end of the meeting? You know, we'd welcome that. And Jacob, have I forgotten anything? Do you see it differently?
No, we can do more work. I mean, the votes. The vote happened. What I would say is like, you know, we could have started with two and changed it to three down the road. Again, the governing body, you know, gets to choose how this is structured. And as Lori said, we've had lots of dialogue at the Homes for Good Board and Lane County Board, but that said, we will do more work, as Greg said, and bring it back as soon as we can.
Great. Thank you very much. And we will move on to item eight B, order twenty-two dash zero three dash two-nine dash one-three in the matter of presenting an audit of the Local Option Tax Levy Fund that supports jail beds and youth services for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one, et cetera. And I will turn it over to staff for this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Commissioners. I'm Robert Tintle, Financial Services Manager with Lane County. Obviously, I'm joined today by Kevin Muller-Liley and Amanda McClary-Moore from Moss Adams, our independent external auditors who will present the findings and communicate the results of the examination of the compliance requirements commonly referred to as the Audit for Fiscal Year Twenty-One, the Local Option Levy Fund to Support Jail Beds and Youth Services. Also included are the results of the Lane County, Oregon Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFOR, followed by a proposed motion to accept the ACFOR for fiscal year ended June thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. After the presentation, we will allow a few comments for, by the Sheriff and Greg Rikoff, who's representing Youth Services for comments about their programs as a result of the funding from the jail levy. As part of the ACFOR, I also want to thank the Financial Services Team for completing this year's audit, specifically Jeannie Sun, Jenny Chang, Cindy Cutler, and Lynn Smith for all their hard work and dedication to this continuing effort. So now I will turn it over to Moss Adams to present their report, again, followed by comments from the Sheriff and Mr. Rikoff.
Thanks, Robert.
Thanks, Robert. Hi, everyone. I'm Amanda McClary-Moore. I am the partner with Moss Adams, who gets to work with Lane County. Am I able to share my screen? It says somebody else is sharing right now.
Yes, you are allowed. You are able to share your screen.
Right. Presentation mode. Are you seeing presentation mode or are you seeing presenter mode?
We are seeing presenter mode.
Okay, perfect. So let's see. Show the screen. How does that look?
We are not seeing anything.
Okay, give this an easier way then.
Robert or Amanda, if either of you has the presentation and would like to send it to me, I'd be happy to run it.
Wait a minute.
How's that?
There you go. That looks better.
PDF seems to work better for some reason than actually using the PowerPoint through these presentations. So we'll just have to remember that for the future. So I will just share this screen. So as Robert mentioned, we're going to go over two items today. We're going to go over the results of the audit of the ACFER, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And additionally, the tax levy, we're going to go in opposite order of what Robert mentioned here. We're going to go through the audit first. So just a short agenda of those two items that we'll cover today. So we have audited the financial statements of the county for, as of, you know, June 30th, 2021. I know we're in March of 2022 right now, but we completed our audit just about a month ago. And as a result of that audit, we issued what is called an unmodified or clean opinion. So we were able to get comfortable that the financial statements that Robert and Jeannie put together were materially correct in accordance with the accounting principles that you follow, which are those Gatsby principles. So overall, great results. I know it's something that you've come to expect, but always like to say congratulations. We did, you know, there's a lot of work to get this put together and partially remotely, still working through the pandemic. So still some really good results. Because you are a governmental agency, we do have a few other reports that we, that we put together as part of our audit. Because you do have a federal awards audit, so a single audit, we do have to follow those governmental auditing standards as well. And as a result of that, we issue an additional report, which is called the Governmental Auditing Standards Report on Internal Controls and Other Financial Reporting Matters. So essentially, if as part of our audit, we identify some sort of error or lack of internal controls in somewhere, we have to evaluate that. And as part of that evaluation, if we determine that it has, that it's a significant deficiency, so essentially we think something significant could slip through the cracks or a material weakness where we believe a material error could slip through the cracks, it would get reported in this report as a, as a control deficiency. So you can see on the screen here, we have no compliance findings or internal control deficiencies that rose to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness. So some good results there. Because you're an Oregon news municipality, we have some additional auditing standards to follow under the Oregon Minimum Audit Standards. This is where we test items such as procurement. We spend a lot of time looking at the budget process and making sure that you're following all of the Oregon revised statutes and putting together your budget and then test those compliance requirements. And we, as a part of that audit, we did not identify any compliance findings that were required to be reported in that report. So those are our three main reports that we're going to go over today. I have one more that I'm going to mention. But very clean reports. So, so congratulations to your team. The next report that we have is over those federal awards. And this is, says draft on here because this is a part of an audit that we have not yet completed. So this year, we do have three major programs to test. And so we're still working through that process right now. However, we have been through a substantial part of that audit. And so we did at least want to note as part of this meeting today that so far, based on the three programs that we're working through the audit on, that we don't have any control findings or non-compliance findings to report. So we're expecting to have clean reports there, but we just are not quite through that audit process yet. And so we will issue that at a, at a later date. And with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kevin, and he is going to walk us through the tax levy. But I did want to mention before, before I turn it over to him, kind of why we're recording in, in March here. And typically the audits do at the end of December. And this year, the county applied for and was, got an approved extension. So you have the audit completed actually by the end of March. And so obviously met that deadline and issued well before then as a result of needing to incorporate the Homes for Good audit into the county's audit as it's, you know, reported as a discreetly presented component unit within the county financial statements. And so it took getting through the Homes for Good audit to incorporate those numbers into the county. So we're able to complete that audit within the extended due dates timeframe. And with that, I will turn it over to Kevin.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. If you want to advance the slide, so really good audit results on the county's financial statement. I'll be talking now about a kind of a specific element, and that's the tax levy, which is not an audit, but it's an examination. So pretty similar. We're looking at internal controls over compliance with the assertions that the county told the public that they would follow when that initial ballot measure was passed several years ago to fund jail services and juvenile youth services. So there's a document, that's our report, really has two pieces to it. The first is the Local Option Levy Tax Fund, the revenues and expenditures for the year there. That's also included in the county's financial statement, but that's part of the report. And then the second piece is how the county met its six assertions, and I'll talk about each of those. So the first assertion, if you want to advance that, Amanda, is that the county would have a special revenue fund. That's the Local Option Tax Levy Fund that was set up years ago. It continues to be operated. And this is where all the tax levy revenues are reported in the county's financial statements. So no issues there with that fund. Another key assertion was that the general fund would continue appropriating dollars specifically for jail service funding. And we did certainly audit the general fund as part of the county financial statement. And then we got into the detail that we see that expenditures continue to be spent on jail service funding from the general service fund. Next slide. Now, these are two assertions relating to kind of the operations of both the jail and youth services. So we actually went on site and we visited both facilities. As far as the jail goes, we're looking to see that there was at least 255 beds that were operating during FY21. So we observed that to be the case. Now, we're not going to be there on site all the time. So we also selected a sample. The county does three jail bed counts every day. And we saw in looking at that, that we felt comfortable that it continued to be operated as the public would expect to meet the 255 local adult jail bed requirement. And then with youth services, that's funded with 16 youth detention beds and 16 youth treatment beds. We visited that site. We also looked at what the council looked like during the year and also got comfortable that that requirement was being met. And then the final two assertions that we look at, one of those is, so property taxes are collected for that tax levy. And during FY21, it was required that 91% would be used for jail operations, 9% were used for critical youth services. So we get into the property tax details, revenue collected, and we see that that is indeed how it was allocated during the year. Now, for some of the prior years, some of those allocations are a little bit different. As an example, in FY19, 84 and a half percent went to jail. The remainder went to critical youth services. Those were decisions made in the prior year. So when you are collecting back taxes, we are checking to make sure that those percentages are also being followed and no issues there. And really, the, the final assertion that we test is that the Local Option Levy Fund received a clean opinion. So it's audited as a major fund as part of the Lane County Financial Statement. And that fund did indeed receive a clean opinion. So by all accounts, all six assertions were met for FY21. So I think that shows some good stewardship on the county's part in terms of how the finances are monitored throughout the year, how operations are being kept to make the public feel that those tax, tax dollars are being used as they said they would be. And really, that's the results of the county's audit and the tax levy examination. Now, we went into more detail. We met about 10 days ago with the Finance and Audit Committee. We talked through some more specifics on the audit, but in terms of this body, really wanted to give you a high level look of the audit results in the tax levy examination. And also a good time to thank Robert, Jeannie, and the rest of the county finance staff on helping us through the audit. Moss Adams really enjoys our working relationship with the county. And with that, Man and I will turn it over to comments.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. Anything else from staff before I ask the Commissioners if they have any comments or questions?
Chair Triger, if I can invite the Sheriff to just have a few comments regarding the jail levy, followed by Greg Rickoff. It's a great opportunity for them to speak to this as well as far as what's occurred in the past year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll jump in here. Thank you, Vice Chair Triger and Commissioners. Just want to say how glad I am that we are once again able to present this third party report demonstrating that the Sheriff's Office and the county have consistently held true to what we told the voters we would do. You know, I'm so fortunate to have taken on the role of Sheriff after this levy was implemented. I was within the Sheriff's Office in a different role prior to the levy and was a part of the fact that, that the Lane County Public Safety System as a whole is a complicated system. And prior to this levy, everyone within the system recognized that without a functional jail, the system doesn't work. And so I'm so thankful to the hard work of then Sheriff Tom Turner and several folks who are on this call to actually get this thing accomplished and make sure to communicate well with the voters that we would be very careful and very transparent and very accountable with this levy. And I just really appreciate the partnership between the Sheriff's Office, the County Budget Office, and the way we are consistently very careful, very mindful, and very transparent about how we use this levy because it's so important that, that we build that trust for the voters. The reality is, we're going to have to have, we're, we're headed into our 10th year. We're going to have to have this levy renewed or our system will once again fail. And so it's just so valuable that we get to have this presentation and demonstrate to the voters, we've, we've been true to our word, we've been consistent. And, you know, it's my privilege to get to take folks on jail tours and show them the good work that's going on over there. I'm tremendously proud of our jail staff, the leadership that's been demonstrated over there. I sincerely believe that we're a leader within the state of Oregon as far as county jails with our investments and in mental health and mental health treatment. We have six mental health specialists working within our jail. We're the only jail in the state of Oregon that has that. None of that would be possible if we didn't have the levy to be able to, to provide those services. And then just a nod to the fact that the last two years have just been tremendously difficult for our jail staff to operate a jail during a pandemic. So proud of the way they've done it. They've worked really, really hard and we were able to consistently have those 255 beds at work, even while we were needing to reduce our dorm population because of the pandemic. So yeah, I just really appreciate that. We have a really great team and I'm really proud of the work that's been done. And so thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you, Sheriff. Greg, did you want to say a few words?
I, Chair Triger, Commissioners, this is the first time I'm appearing before you as the Director of Community Justice and Rehabilitation Services. And all I have to say is ditto. I think Sheriff Harold did a remarkable overview of expressing, you know, both our gratitude to the commission and to the taxpayers of Lane County for these funds. They, these, we call them critical youth services, and this funding is critical for those critical youth services. So we take our responsibility very seriously around the detention beds, around the treatment beds. We take our obligation to serve these young people very ser, seriously. We do it with great focus and we remain grateful for the support to be able to do that. These are essential funds. And we look forward to working with the Sheriff as we start talking with the community about the renewal of the levy.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you to Moss Adams for the presentation and to the staff that worked on it. And I see Commissioner Bernie's hand up, and I'll just say for me, I won't have any comments other than this is an interesting full circle moment for me because I was fairly new on the Budget Committee when this levy first passed and we were having the discussions of the slow to staff up and how that gave us sort of some extra dollars. And I remember sitting in the boardroom and having the conversation about whether we could reapportion those dollars to youth services so that we could make, make best use of them and do right by the, the intent of the, of the levy. So this is great to see this come back around full circle. Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you. Well, first I was going to say this is an outstanding audit, but I'm not qualified to know whether your audits are any good or not. But the audit results are absolutely outstanding. So thank you for that. Obviously, no questions there. It's my understanding, it also, it seems to me that, that the services, Sheriff and others that, that the jail has been able to provide, which this levy has underscored, are now essential services. The times have changed so much, and this jail is outstanding. And it's, as you mentioned, and as Clint has mentioned, Captain Riley has mentioned to me many times, really stands up with its mental health services to inmates and its, you know, its responsibilities during COVID. Is it my, it's my understanding we are needing to go out for a renewal of the levy. Is that going to be in May of next year?
That's currently our intention, yes.
Okay, so this becomes critical to be accountable to the taxpayers, to let them know how these dollars were spent. As I, I'm not going to, I don't know, but I can't imagine that this Board of Commissioners won't unanimously want to move with the Sheriff's Department and make the case for continuation of the levy. So I think this becomes sort of a critical piece of that. I want to thank the, the auditors here, and I want to thank you, Sheriff. And really, those are my only comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you. I think the report today, both for the overall audit and of course for the review of the levy, is outstanding. Given the pandemic, all the other emergencies going on in the last few years, you know, one could think that it could be pretty easy, that we could have not been able to present the material in the way that the auditors needed or that something slipped. But in fact, we don't have that issue. We were able to keep it together, keep the wheels on the bus and ensure that, sorry, dog's barking in the background. We were just able to ensure that we could continue the services as expected by, by our residents. And with this clean audit, I'm just really proud of the county and how well we've been able to keep it together all this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck and dog. Thank you, Commissioner Buck and Dog. Commissioner Bozovich.
Thank you. Hopefully, my dogs will stay out of this. So I just want to quickly just say, you know, thank you to the sheriff and the folks at Youth Services and Greg for once again doing what's necessary so that we do have this clean audit, thanks to the financial folks. Also for the clean audit of the overall finances of the county. You know, I've been on multiple boards, you know, getting financial audits every year as required by the state. And I can't tell you how many, you know, whether, you know, it's El Rapa or MWMC where there's actually findings in the audit and and corrections to be made or whatever. No findings and no findings of compliance for the entire organization is an amazing statement of how well we're keeping our books and should speak to our transparency. I just, I just want to say with the sheriff's levy and the public safety levy, how important it was when we set this up, you know, trying to sell to the voters, you know, taxing themselves to to support public safety after fourteen unsuccessful tries, that we actually wrote into the levy language, this requirement for the annual audit and the six promises we made, the assertions that we made about keeping the money separate, maintaining a certain number of beds, all those things that we promised to do and we're showing year after year, we're keeping that promise. It's the reason why we've renewed it so easily with almost a three to one support for tax levy, which is almost unheard of. It's the reason why we passed it after after a generation of unsuccessful attempts to fund public safety in this county. And I just want to say that, that, you know, the folks that helped put that together, you know, ten years ago, almost now. And and were thoughtful enough to add in this requirement for the auditing and making these assertions. How smart do we look now? Some some of those people that were involved in that. And I and I just want to say congratulations to to everybody in the entire county. I know it's not just Robert in the Finance Department. There's somebody in every department that has to keep their books straight, whether it's Health and Human Services, you know, down to small, small divisions and departments, you know, in public works or something, everybody has to be keeping their books straight to end up with a final audit of the entire county that has no findings. So just congratulations to our entire staff. There's a lot of people out there working hard to keep your taxpayers' funds being spent correctly and and being able to say we spent them on what they were allowed to be spent for and we accounted for them and and kept good books. It's such an important thing to be able to tell our citizens. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll just echo what all of my colleagues have stated and and also just add that over the years since this levy was formulated and passed and has been implemented and now audited with such great success, the community's whole understanding of the totality of what a public safety system looks like, including the behavioral health work and the eventual hopeful construction of a behavioral health stabilization center, I think this just adds another talking point for us to to share about the county's work around public safety as a holistic, integrated system and the role that the jail plays and and how important the services we deliver there are to the health and safety of of some of the most vulnerable people in the community. So appreciate everyone's comments, appreciate staff's work. Are there any final comments from staff before I ask for a motion on the order?
I'm Chair Trigger. If I may, thank you for your comments and I I take Commissioner Bozovich's comments to heart because I think it truly is an accurate reflection of of where we are as as are your comments about the the system and its totality. If I may, for a moment, put on my former Director of Operations hat to Commissioner Bernie, we have looked around, we pay attention to the auditing opportunities out there and Moss Adams is a remarkable partner. We are really excited to continue to work with them. We do our homework and they are a diligent and thoughtful team and great partners. And if I'm not mistaken, this could very well be the last time Robert Tinto will be before you as our Financial Services Manager and Treasurer. His last audit in that role as he moves into the ARPA manager position. He has created created a remarkable team. They really do a tremendous job and I owe Robert a debt of gratitude and I think the county does as well. He has kept us clean, clear and above board. And we are going to have to do some work to find another Financial Services Manager of his quality. So thank you, Robert.
Great. Thank you for that. And yes, thank you, Robert. With that, I'll entertain a motion on the order. Commissioner Buck?
I had to pause to give another person a chance, but I'll go ahead. I'll move approval of Order twenty-two dash zero three dash twenty-nine dash thirteen as presented.
It's been moved by Commissioner Buck, seconded by
Sorry, Jay, did you want to second that?
Go ahead.
Ventriloquism is is alive and well. And I'm in the public service building. So if anybody starts hearing a dog barking in the background, that's going to be interesting. I think that was Commissioner Bernie that seconded, right? So with that voting on the order, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes four zero with Commissioner Farr excused. Thank you all. Next up from County Administration announcements.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Just a couple of quick things. Well, the first one may not be really quick, but this is an update on the Halt Dam on Horton Pond. We had a an assignment or request, a board assignment request from Commissioner Bozovich recently to take a look at the Bureau of Land Management's potential closure of the dam and associated facilities. So I wanted to report back to the board on that and just provides, so I'm going to give you this and I can send an email as well, but a verbal sort of update on that. And then what our recommendation would be moving forward. So the Halt Dam on Horton Pond, which is referred to as the Halt Reservoir, is owned by the Bureau of Land Management. It's a popular recreation area near Low Pass along Lake Creek. Due to safety concerns associated with the dam, the Bureau of Land Management is considering removing the dam. The BLM is currently preparing an environmental impact statement to evaluate options for recreational use, historical interpretation, habitat protection and community safety. The environmental review will analyze a range of alternatives, including no action, a no action alternative, as well as three additional possibilities, which would be improving the existing dam infrastructure, removing the existing infrastructure and rebuilding the dam or removing the dam and draining the reservoir. So those are the four actions, either no action or those three potential actions. Little background, the dam was constructed in nineteen forty-nine as a log storage facility for a mill. It was constructed on an ancient landslide that is comprising its structural, that is compromising its structural integrity. In two thousand and twelve, the BLM completed a comprehensive valuation on the dam that found eleven potential failure modes presenting a high risk of failure. The dam requires constant monitoring and adjustment of the outflow valve by BLM engineers to avoid overwhelming the current water level controls in place. So costly reservations to the dam have been ongoing, things such as grouting, reinforcement structures, monitoring devices to address the structural and safety concerns that exist with the dam. A non-functional fish ladder at the dam site currently blocks upstream fish passage to several miles of designated Oregon coastal Coho Critical Habitat. Since two thousand and sixteen, BLM has conducted several public involvement sessions and stakeholder assessments. They've now are pursuing a new public scoping effort that was commenced in January as a requirement, required element of the of the environmental impact statement that I referenced earlier. The BLM currently has a public engagement website and I'll share that with Commissioners via this email that contains information on the project and links, links to subscribe to information on the scoping process. So we've taken, that's just kind of the background and lay of the land in terms of what's happening with the dam and the associated facilities and this public process. We have taken a preliminary look and you would imagine, as you would imagine, our public works team lacks the expertise in managing dams. And we don't have the funding to take jurisdiction of the facility from the BLM. Road funds could not be used. They're not eligible to be used for this purpose. I think as the board certainly understands, our Parks Division has a twenty-seven million dollar backlog in deferred maintenance on current facilities. So just context for something, you know, another initiative that we're trying to pursue, which is identifying ongoing stable funding for our existing park assets. So given those those current challenges, what we would recommend is that we monitor the BLM's public engagement process and that the board consider inviting the BLM to present to the board when they have completed their EIS findings. So you can receive an update on that, understand which of the of the various options they're considering, they're they're leaning towards or moving in that direction. And then the county could consider if it wants to offer a position to the BLM either in advance or after that, and any additional role that the county could play. So that's the update. I'm happy to answer questions or or take additional thoughts from Commissioners on that if you would like to have us invite, and you certainly could do that under Commissioners Business, but I'll just pause there if you have any additional comments on the the Horton Pond discussion.
Great. Thank you. I see Commissioner Bozovich's hand raised.
Thank you. I'll just try and be brief because this is a very complex topic. I'm happy to hear they they seem to be having those four alternatives because they had stated in stakeholder meetings prior to January that they weren't looking at keeping the dam in at all, that the alternatives were about what to do after they remove the dam in their EIS. Yeah, that said, what I'd like to see the board think about is thinking about solutions that keep a critical recreational facility and firefighting facility in Lane County and making it safe and also passable by fish. And there 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 is the ability to do that. Obviously, we don't have the capacity, but once it's a federal facility, a change of jurisdictional ownership of that facility might facilitate that along with a congressionally directed spending to the Corps of Engineers. And we, as the Board of Commissioners, I think, could play a role in involving our local congressional delegation to look into that. And that that's really what I would like the board to try and focus on because that's the ultimate solution, I believe. The Corps is used to having high hazard dams. As you described that dam, you could have been describing Firm Ridge Reservoir Dam because it's built on, you know, an old, basically swamp and has had significant issues and the Corps had to go through a significant reconstruction and adding drainage to that dam to keep it safe recently. So, you know, there there is the ability to upgrade and and fix those issues. There's, it is the ability to upgrade and fix fish passage issues. It just is such a critical recreational facility for the town of Horton and the and the Horton Store, which is the only gas station in a twenty mile radius. And and it's also a critical helicopter dipping site for fighting wildfire. And, you know, everybody understands that the critical issue of wildfires in in our current climate. So that's all. I would just ask the board to consider that portion of it as looking for, how can we make this work? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? All right, well.
One other item?
Yeah.
Sorry, is it just, this is a feel-good one. I love, you oftentimes hear me talking about the our emerging leaders program and I I just wanted to share a little update. I had an opportunity yesterday, as I do a few times a year, try to meet with our emerging leader graduates and and soon to be graduates from that program that we established just about five years, four and a half years ago now. And this was in effort to a a number of investments in our existing workforce, recognizing that we have incredible talent in our organization and we want to create opportunities for those employees. And we now have nearly two thousand full-time equivalent positions in Lane County and some incredible talent. And despite the workforce challenges and labor shortage nationally, we've done, I think, a really great job of being able to recruit and retain our talent. And this emerging leaders program is an effort to create opportunity to continue to invest in that talent that wants more, that that is seeking more opportunity to contribute, to engage and to pursue career development, ideally here within our organization. So we want to grow, foster the growth of that talent. So I had an opportunity to meet yesterday with that, with the group. We had about forty individuals that were able to attend. We now have seventy-six employees, approximately seventy-six employees have gone through that program or nearing this most recent cohort will be graduating this Friday. They have their presentations on Thursday and they're graduating from the cohort on Friday, representing every part of our organization from the sheriff's office, the DA's office, parole and probation, our our public safety, law enforcement, youth services side to our clinics and our behavioral health, to our land management, our finance, our technology, really across the organization, we have employees that have participated in this program. And it's really, one of the coolest things is to see the continued engagement of these employees and the number of employees who have moved into other roles in the organization. And in many of them in advancement, have advanced in in their careers since they've gone through this program. So I wanted to just make note of that and I wanted to in particular call out Aaron Rollins, who will be leaving us at the end of this this month. Aaron is her her partner received an incredible job opportunity in Southern California. So their family is moving because of that. And we're, but we are very sorry to see Aaron Rollins leave our organization. She's done just incredible work over the course of the past near decade with Lane County, helping us to build these types of programs where we can invest in the incredible talent that we have here at Lane County. So I want to take that moment to recognize both that program and Aaron Rollins' contribution to that program and wish her all the best. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Thank you so much. I see Commissioner Bernie's hand up. Is that related to County Administration announcements item?
Well, yeah, I was trying to get the chair's attention after Commissioner Bozovich, so I apologize. And I forgot to take it down. So I guess I'll just make the quick statement I was going to, but it's out of order. I apologize. I just want to, in this particular instance, appreciate Commissioner Bozovich. What you said, I think that, I think all too often we fall into whining and complaining and saying the sky is falling, but that to me was a very articulate vision of where we ought to go with the Horton Dam issue and and BLM. And I just wanted to voice my agreement with that as a direction. I'd also like to say, if I may, that emerging leaders, you know, the twenty forty or forty twenty club, you know, the younger people, all of these, I'm glad Lane County can benefit. I'm also glad that private businesses and nonprofits and other parts of our community can benefit too. Because while our responsibility and authority relates to county government, Steve, you know, I think you're doing a hell of a job. I mean, just a hell of a job. A rising tide lifts all boats. And I think these are the kinds of things in infrastructure for the whole community's benefit that that benefits all sectors, not just government, but government too. Thank you. And thanks for calling on me, Vice Chair. I'm sorry I didn't get your attention earlier.
Thank you, Commissioner. So it's my understanding, if that concludes County Administrators announcements, we have no item from County Council today. So our last item before lunch is an executive session. I will ask Diana to please read us into that executive session. And when she has completed reading us in, we'll take five minutes before reconvening in executive session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trigger. This is
This is notice for executive session for Wednesday, March 29. The Board of Commissioners will meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations and potential Juneteenth holiday and to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602D and E, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session while other members of the audience are asked to leave. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. The Board reserves the right to come back out into public session should the need arise.
Thank you. With that, I will adjourn this morning's session. We will convene at 10:53 in executive session and then again in public session promptly at 1:34 a time certain. Thank you all.